They've got their hands full. Is that number 10 for Adam's number two? Number two, I think so.
Another, another Sandridge.
I know his dad real well.
Emma.
Do you know if they have the baby?
Did Adam have the baby?
Yes.
Did his wife?
Right.
No, we don't know.
We haven't heard it. We are at the clock, seven o'clock hour.
All right, let's call this meeting to order, the November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission. Roll call, Commission Member Sabreezy.
Here.
Commission Member Kramer.
Here.
Mission Member Sandridge is not here. Mission Member Whitmore.
Here.
Mission Member BB here. All right. In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We'll do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar, the link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. Join by telephone, dial one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window, or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. This time, we will proceed with the meeting. We are going to do a citizen comment. Period. Chris, do you want to say anything about citizen comments or just go right into it? We are not.
Be appropriate to.
Okay, yeah, we are not. This is a gentle citizens comments and it's A okay if it's all about warm run solar. So, Chris, you want to go through the list? Let's get started. Oh. Let me, let me read something before we start. We will now welcome citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to sign up to speak or use the raise your hand feature online if wishing to address the commission. This time is offered for citizens to offer comments to the planning commission with the understanding that this is not an open dialogue nor a question answer period. Comments should be addressed only to the commission and not the audience. Our goal is to have anyone that wishes to address the commission speak. And for the audience and commission, listen and be respectful to all. Once you have signed up, when I call your name or Chris calls your name to speak, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There's a timer on the table for your convenience. Once the timer has gone off, please take your seat. Is there anyone who has signed up to speak in person?
Yes, sir. First on the list is this Cusamano, followed by Fred Fabrié.
Nancy Cusamano, I'm from Rockbridge. And I'm here to talk about the solar one one thing. How many meanings have we had about this project? Many to mention, and I've been to all of them. And still, we need another one. If it takes this long to decide, I think you have your decision right now. You need to turn it down.
Fred Fabrié, followed by Melody Tennant.
Thank you. My name is Fred Fabrié. I live in Walkers Creek. I'm strongly in favor of building the Huffman Solar Array. The Huffman's added income will ease the burden of farm management. The county will benefit from increased taxes on the land. Local workers will be hired to build and tend the solar farm. The developers agreed to put in plant the ground with pollinator attracting plants and native grasses. The array, when removed in thirty years, will leave intact farmland, having been preserved from industrial development. These reasons are important, but the major reason, from my opinion, is that our county needs, has a need for clean electricity. Generated without carbon dioxide released to the air. Virtually all climate scientists agree that our planet is getting hotter. And will continue to get hotter until we stop the rise of carbon dioxide concentration in our air. They warn that droughts, wildfires, severe rain events, and flooding will become more frequent and will increasingly affect Rockbridge County. Moreover, the intensity of droughts and floods will increase until global CO2 levels stop increasing. These predictions of client, climate scientists must be heeded. Well, the federal government, aware of these things, has provided incentives to invest, investors to build solar and global wind farms as a partial solution against increasing global warming. For thirty years, the Huffman Solar Array will stop that proportion of CO2 pollution that results from electricity currently supplied by Virginia coal-fired generating plants to an estimated three hundred and forty homes in Rockbridge County. Building the Huffman Solar Farm is a small but necessary step to stop global warming. And will benefit each and every person in the county and in the state. For all these reasons, I strongly recommend we go ahead with the proposed solar array. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Tennant, followed by Phyllis Fabrié.
Hello, my name is Melody Tennant. I'm from the Walkers Creek area. I am here to speak for the solar array. I have a child and grandchildren, and I'm concerned about their future. The facts I've gotten is that this solar array is going to be on rocky ground. This would be a great place to put solar. It would. It would provide electricity for three hundred and forty houses. Now, I just did learn about investment versus producer tax credits. So, and I understand that somebody from the company is here. So after the meet, after this segment or whenever, you know, the meeting is adjourned, I would like to look into their eyes. And make sure that they, they provide quality solar panels that will indeed produce enough electricity for three hundred and forty homes. And it helps the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Fabrié, followed by Chris Baumann.
My name is Phyllis Fabrié, and I live in the Walkers Creek District. Please consider the Huffman Farm as an acceptable spot for a solar field. Remember when we all agreed that those giant power towers, those six hundred and seventy-five thousand watt transmission towers were clearly not in keeping with our beautiful rural landscape and ugly blot on our view shed. But they deliver power and plenty of it to many people. We have gotten used to seeing power poles, black cables strung along every street in the city and along rural roads and across pastures and rivers. They deliver electricity to all of us. I drive by the solar field in Rockbridge Bass on a regular basis. I look across the reflective surfaces of the panels and see beauty and hope. Hay bales line the perimeter, creating an agricultural symmetry. The miracle of this energy production is very similar to what occurs with chlorophyll and sunlight in every leaf and every tree and in blades of grass. I find beauty and hope in these panels, not only the hope of clean electrical energy shared with so many people in our county, but a step in the right direction to reduce CO2 in our atmosphere, thereby reducing catastrophic heating of our planet. Please consider the Huffman Farm as an acceptable spot.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Chris Baumann, Walkers Creek District. I think all the commissioners have heard me here before. This is, I believe, the fourth time or third time we've been in front of you, and then we've also been in front of the Board of Supervisors. So I apologize if I'm going to repeat myself, but I, I think that needs to be reminded on the record. This is not about solar. As many of you know, I'm a former tax attorney. This is about harvesting tax credits. The individuals building this, these companies, this entire industry does not care how much energy they produce. That is going to be the issue for Dominion and the other utilities that have made deals with the state. All they want to do is put this together and walk away with their tax credits and sell it to the next LLC and the next LLC and the next one. And by the time we reach that third LLC, this county is not going to have the resources to do anything about any of it. We're not going to have, we, I know what the county's litigation budget is because I've helped the county before. We're not going to be able to afford to track down these Delaware LLCs and enforce anything. This is not a normal business. They don't care about reputation. They don't care about their neighbors. They don't care about any of these things. They care about harvesting the tax credits. Since the Inflation Reduction Act went in, I think it's been, what, a year and a half? They're, they've already sold, one company has already sold seven hundred million dollars in tax credits to Silicon Valley for that, that company Solar One. This is, all this is about harvesting the tax credits. We're making generational decisions that is going to impact children that are not even born yet based on this rush to get to tax credits. If I'm wrong, if I'm incorrect, even partially incorrect, and this does generate energy and that some of the other ones generate energy, okay. The estimates that they've told you and Dominion has told you is that we're going to have to increase our energy output by sixty, seventy percent. That means in three years from now, four years from now, we can build them. But let's find out if it works or if this is going to be one of the things we've seen before where there's a perverse incentive through the tax code. People go out and throw these things together, walk away, and it's the local communities, the neighbors, us, the local government, that has to deal with these issues. There are plenty of solid environmental issues that have not been addressed yet and other issues that are out there. But at the end of the day, this is about tax credit. So the citizens you're hearing from that support this are supporting it because they hear the word soul. And that is why they're up here. And I agree with them on ninety percent of what they're saying. The problem is, this doesn't help solar. This, at the end of the day, is going to create a network of basically trash sites throughout the country because no one cares on the production side whether or not they work. They only type, they only care about the tax credits. You guys had the authority to turn this down. Again, you've heard more than enough testimony that it's going to have a negative impact on the district. It doesn't fit with the comprehensive plan. And the, the big one is the welfare of public. You know, for the first two of these, everybody was opposed to this. They've now had time to marshal their forces and get more people up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Mitchell Davis, followed by Bill Russell.
I'm Mitchell Davis. Thanks for your time. South River District. My family owns land that would be surrounded by this on two sides. Got four homes on the property. My sisters, myself, two rental homes. And I would be negatively, negatively impacted during construction, which can last almost two years. It goes from seven AM to seven PM, six days a week. They'll be drilling through solid rock for posts, power poles, and cables. The dust and loud volume of this drilling will make our lives miserable. Spending time outdoors, even having your windows up, won't be an option. It harms our quality of life. We also got a well located on the boundary. We've got another well on the property too. This kind of construction, wells have collapsed from it. If that happens, we not only lose our water, but you lose your home until we can get the water supply. We don't know if that will happen, but neither do they, even though they say they do. Once construction is over, we've got a permanent eyesore. As you know, the trees that they talked about, they're not talking about much now, won't grow on solid rocks, so there's no screen. So we're looking right at it. Get noise from inverters, glare, heat, and health concerns. I'm talking about, it's going to be so close, you could pitch a rock to it from, from these homes. I mean, it's right there. Economic impact. You got a five to twenty-five percent decrease in property values depending on proximity. And because this would be right on the border on two sides, it's probably going to be closer to the high side. This would also lower the value of rental property and make it more difficult to find renters who wouldn't mind living next to a solar field. The county's use of the Land Law Handbook addressing zoning special exemptions states clearly the reasonable grounds to deny a special exemption. I'm going to read three, but others also apply. One, the proposed use would have an adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood. That's pretty obvious. Two, the proposed use would have an adverse impact on roads and create a hazardous traffic situation. And three, the proposed use would have an adverse impact on the abutting properties, which I just covered. It seems these are all reasonable grounds to deny a special exemption recommendation. And I ask that you don't recommend this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Russell, followed by John Vossberg.
Bill Russell, Cars Creek. Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight and doing that job. One, I want to follow up something Chris said very briefly. We're ignoring public interests in deciding this within a planning commission and within the supervisors of the net effect on our economy of continuing to engage in using these tax credits. Congressional Budget Office estimates it's going to take two hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars out of tax revenues for the federal government. That estimate was declared to be off by a factor of three when it was made. So we may be looking at a trillion dollars there. I'll raise this issue more extensively before the supervisors. More in line with what you're, you're looking at here. I have yet to see process-wise a set of conditions that actually addressed what should be done to compensate neighbors for their loss or damages in these processes. I, I've heard neighbors here talk about possibility of some pretty significant losses, including losses of their place to live. But I see no conditions that address some kind of compensatory fund to help them in the event of, that this happened. I have heard it said by the county, well, they can sue. Well, those of us that went to law school know that anybody can sue, but the likelihood of being able to recover in that process is pretty dim when you would have to sue a company who's, and I have nothing wrong with, with their business plan, but their business plan is totally to put these in operation, bundle them and sell them. I just sold ten more of them last month. That's twenty that I know of in, in a little over a year. This is what I expect to happen here. It won't be the same company that's there. There won't be a fund available, and the county's not going to step up to take care of this problem. You, I think, it is incumbent on, come up with some solution in the conditions that addresses the problems that the neighbors have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. John Vossberg.
Good evening. My name's John Vossberg. My wife and I live in Rockbridge Bass. I'm here to speak strongly in favor of the solar project. In twenty fifteen, we put solar panels on our house. Two of my neighbors have solar panels, large installations on the ground. It's technology that works. It's cost efficient. And I think it seems, at least to me, a very reasonable usage of property that's owned industrially. Beyond that, there's been a lot of points brought up about the environmental effect. I'll just mention that as of twenty twenty-three, five percent of electricity generated in the United States is solar. And doesn't sound like a lot maybe, but by twenty twenty-four, the United States Energy Information Agency predicts that fifty-five to sixty percent of the new the additional energy generation will be solar. So it, I think it behooves us, it's the future, it's what we need to do, it's what we should do, and we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. That is everyone that's physically signed up now, but of course, we'll recognize anyone else in the audience. If you could come up, state your name, magisterial district, limit your comments, three minutes max.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Charles Bedell from South River. I just have a quick thing. I've been looking at other counties and what they've done, and, and what I'm trying to address is your work on, on a new ordinance for the covering these things specifically, not having to have all these motions for having an exception to this or exception to that, so that everyone knows right from the get-go what they're getting involved in. I'd like to submit, can, can you submit things for the record, kind of?
Yes.
Okay, I have a, a copy here of let me put my eyes on. Surrey County has a solar siting agreement. And one of the interesting things in here is that not only do they get taxes, but as part of their agreement, the applicant, it says, I'll quote, "The applicant shall make premium," excuse me, "shall make minimum payments above and beyond its tax obligations to the county at the annual rate of fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt, as measured by whatever, whatever." So I don't know if you have that in the agreement that this company would sign for this actual project that everybody's discussing tonight, but if we don't, it seems like that should be considered. And maybe it could be part of our overall, you know, you have that committee working on it. And, and maybe this could be something that you'd, you know, be interested. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lee Merrill, Walkers Creek. The reason I continue to endorse this project is a win-win for the county, the county government, the people who live in Rockbridge County. I think that the ordinance that's being developed can perhaps be studied for further improvements that further mitigate the immediate effects of adjacent property owners. That's debatable as to whether that's adequately handled. Some of the concerns you've heard, but as to this project, we know solar farms work economically in terms of the efficiency of them and what they're producing. The financing mechanisms may be criticized because it's a subsidy in a form, but it's stimulating an investment that the culture is making to rectify a problem that's existential to our existence here in the next hundred years. And this is the beginning of that transition. This project's even on the right land. You know, I was in here when the bark put in the one in Rock, at Cars Creek, indicating that I, well, I had no other complaint, where it was being put in a floodplain and was subject to sycamore trees raking through the field. So there are potential environmental effects of any project. This one is not going to pollute the water. It's going to improve the soils over time. It's going to protect the land and bank it so that it can be farmland instead of cut up into a subdivision or into a warehousing operation or some other use. The community can make sense of what to do with it when this is all done. You'll look back on this decision within three years and think, hey, this is pretty good, actually. It's not a problem. Have you seen the sheep in Alexander's Fairfield industrial site? It's operating. Carbon is being sequestered into the soil. Money is being made by all sorts of parties, mostly our local population. So I can't I just think that the concerns that you're hearing are not fabricated. Some of them are real, but many are exaggerated. If, there are no visual impacts here that I can discern for having studied it considerably. At distance, they are what they are. You see them around the county. They look fine at a great distance. When they're immediately adjacent to you, if you happen to be in the wrong position, you might take some concern about it. That's what the screening is about. Is the screening adequate? Let's look at the ordinance as it's developed. This on the face of it looks like it is. I think you ought to bond the planting of the trees so that you, they tie them up in terms of that, really so that this issue that they won't be affected, that the screening won't be affected is put to rest. I don't want to go anymore. This, we'll, we'll save it for the supervisors. I, I really hope you will be sending it back to the supervisors with your unanimous support.
Thank you. Thank you. You state your name, magisterial district for the record.
I'm Alan Stout, an officer of Warm Run Citizens Association, located in South River District. Over the last several meetings involving the planning commission and the board of supervisors, we have verbalized and provided in writing overwhelming reasons why this zoning special exception application because of its location should justifiably be a denial recommendation to the board of supervisors. So tonight, I'm going to spare you a repeat of all the reasons why this particular location would adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the ten families living adjacent to and neighboring the proposed application site. It is not often we are given the opportunity to right a wrong decision we have made. But tonight is a chance to do just that. From the information that has been provided, you have overwhelming justification for a denial recommendation of the application based on Virginia court cases supporting the reasons for denying zoning special exception decisions, all of which support the grounds for denying this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? If there's anyone online that would make a, like, make a comment, please utilize raise your hand now. Not seeing anyone, turn back over to the chair.
All right, we're going to proceed with the, the regular meeting now. We'll come back to the warm run issue later on in the meeting. Have you all read the minutes? We need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, board reports.
Yes, sir. At last night's meeting, excuse me, at last night's meeting, November twelfth, the Board of Supervisors approved the Jubilee Hill LLC application for both the rezoning and special exception, as recommended by the planning as recommended by the Planning Commission. There was no TCO meeting in November and there was no, there's not going to be a BZA meeting in November. Last Community Development Committee meeting was on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the majority of the discussion pertained to the upcoming Planning Commission meeting and the upcoming Board of Supervisors meeting. The next meeting of the Office Community, I was, the Community Development Committee will be on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, now let's see, are we back to here back to Warm Run Solar, okay. Warm Run Solar LLC, one oh seventh Street, Charlottesville, Virginia, two two nine oh two, application for a special exception permit for a public utility develop and operate a three point zero zero megawatt AC solar facility in the AT zoning district. As the Planning Commission held and closed its public hearing on August fourteenth, twenty twenty twenty-four, therefore, tonight's Planning Commission meeting does not include a public hearing associated with the agenda item. I would like to thank everyone for their attendance this evening and for the comments made during the citizens' comment portion of tonight's meeting. There are two actions that the Planning Commission is discussing this evening. They include the Planning Commission making a determination as to whether the Warm Run Solar project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. And the second is further consideration of the special exception application. At this time, I would like to have the staff provide an overview of the process.
Thank you. Share my screen. And I apologize to the audience, this one is not working. It's usually I've joked around with someone before the meeting. It's usually one of them, but usually the screens work, so I do apologize about that. Warm Run Solar LLC, one oh five Fifth Street, Charlottesville, Virginia, has made an application for a special exception permit to develop a three point zero zero megawatt AC solar project. Property is identified as tax map number sixty-two dash twelve dash B one and is located on the east side of Lincoln Road, approximately point five two miles south of the intersection of Lincoln Road and North Lee Highway. The property is owned by Robert F. Huffman trustee. The property is in the South River Magisterial District. Access to the proposed project is from Warm Run Road. Warm Run Road is further identified as State Route seven eighty-eight. The property is located in the Agricultural Transitional Zoning District per section six oh three B point oh three dash fourteen of the regulations. That's the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Public utilities are used by special exception in the AT zoning district. The three point zero zero, excuse me, megawatt project, proposed project is to be located on approximately thirty-four acres of the Huffman track, further identified as tax map number sixty-two dash fifty, excuse me, sixty-two dash twelve dash B one that consists of fifty-six acres per tax records. So on your screen here in front of us, the the one track of land is highlighted in magenta with the proposed access shown in gray and the approximate fenced-in location shown in the in the the green area. As stated in previous meeting, the fifty-six acre track is a portion of approximately one hundred and sixty-six acre Huffman farm. I thought it'd be beneficial to give a overview, a summary of the Planning Commission process. On August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission held its public hearing. The Planning Commission closed the public hearing on that date and set the matter over for the next meeting, which would have been September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. At the September eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special exception with conditions. Mr. Sabrizi participated in the meeting remotely. After the September eleventh meeting, the modifications to the Code of Virginia, section two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight point three slash D, or excuse me, parentheses D, which went into effect on July first, twenty twenty-four, were discovered. These these modifications included the requirement that a public body, in this case, the Planning Commission, annually adopt electronic meeting policy. The Planning Commission previously adopted its electronic meeting policy on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Until July first, twenty twenty-four, there was no requirement to annually adopt the electronic meeting policy. Mr. Sabrizi followed all other requirements, including the appability and procedures of the Planning Commission electronic meeting policy. At the time of the September eleventh, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting, staff was unaware of the modifications to the code section pertaining to electronic meeting policies. Next, I'd like to review, briefly review the board action, Board of Supervisors' action. On October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the Board of Supervisors unanimously adopted the following motion. I move to the matter of the Warm Run Solar, excuse me, Warm Run Solar Special Exception Application be remanded to the Planning Commission for further consideration and a vote that the Planning Commission may be granted additional thirty days in which to take action on the application. The Planning Commission also shall make a determination as whether the Warm Run Solar project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. Briefly talk about some additional conditions since that timeframe. Since the September Planning Commission meeting, staff has received the suggested condition from the applicant that reads, quote, "In accordance with Virginia Code fifteen point two dash twenty-two eighty-eight periods eight, payment equal to forty-five thousand dollars shall be made to the county within three months following the trade permit approval. Such 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 sum shall be earmarked and expended by the county for construction of substantial public improvements, the need for which not is generated solely by granting the special exception permit." The county administration is in the process of discussing this condition with Chief Nathan Ramsey with the Fire, excuse me, Rockbridge County Fire Rescue and Emergency Management to determine the best utilization of the funds were the special exception to be approved by the board and and the board grants this is additional condition. Additionally, since the September eleventh, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting, the Office of Community Development received a memo from Chief Ramsey, again with the Rockbridge County Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Managers Management addressing some firefighting as it relates to solar facilities. The October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four memo reviews some requested conditions for potential solar facilities. They include, one, constant up-to-date information of the site manager or operator available at times. Number two, pre-plans, in parentheses, drawings provided to the Fire and Rescue Department. Number three, knockbox installed at the main entry point. Number four, clearly visible disconnection and isolation labeling. And number five, final suggestion is initial training and facility walkthrough for fire personnel. Conditions that could be utilized in the Warm Run Solar application have been drafted for the commission's considerations pertaining to the October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four memo from Chief Ramsey. Additionally, there has been discussion throughout the process about associated with the use of rock hammers and blasting during the construction or excavation and or the excavation of the proposed facility. A condition has been drafted that states that no blasting and or use of explosives shall be utilized for the excavation slash construction of the project. Lastly, there has been a discussion on the recommended condition number eight as it pertains to the product certification and standards. Included in the agenda package, the memo dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four from the applicant with a requested modification to that draft condition, again, a draft condition number eight. The memo includes the requested modification and the applicant's justification to remove the requirement for the National Sanitation Foundation slash American National Standard Institute number four fifty-seven. As previously stated, the Board of Supervisors' motion included that the Planning Commission shall make a determination as whether the Warm Run Solar project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. For the Planning Commission's consideration, staff has drafted two resolutions. The first states that the that the commission finds that the application is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan with the reasonings that have been developed in by staff in coordination with the majority of the Planning Commission members. The second resolution is for the Planning Commission's consideration states that the Planning Commission finds that the application is not in substantial compliance with the comprehensive place. In this case, the reasonings are left blank. Again, the resolution stating that the commission finds that the application is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan was developed in coordination with the majority of the Planning Commission meeting. Prior to turning the floor over to the applicant, I would like to state that the draft motions that that are in front of y'all and the the two resolutions are available to the public over at the table. That concludes the staff portion of the presentation. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Tyler McEvry, Associate Project Developer with Sun Tribe Development.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission. We're obviously back before the Planning Commission tonight to try and solve the procedural issue that Chris spoke about that arose from the September eleventh Planning Commission meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you all again, and I'm here seeking the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. The story of this project is actually about the Huffman family. Mr. Huffman, who is here tonight, saw small-scale solar as the right way for his family to extend their legacy on their own land, allowing them to earn revenue so that they don't have to continue selling off portions of the family farm. This project is a passive, low-impact use that aligns with the comprehensive plan. It provides benefits to the community and it allows agriculture to continue on the remainder of the Huffman family farm. Over the course of the previous Planning Commission meetings and Board of Supervisor meetings and direct conversation with members of the public and here tonight, we've heard some troubling claims about solar and this project specifically. If those claims were true, I would not be sitting here presenting this project to you tonight, and I certainly wouldn't be in this industry. I was born and raised in Virginia and grew up hiking and fishing and camping in Rockbridge County. I care deeply about this county and I care deeply about our Commonwealth. I want to take a moment and pause and address one of the specific concerns that was brought up tonight. It was brought up by Mr. Davis, who is a neighbor to the south of the project. Throughout this process, and we will continue to, we have we have been speaking with Mr. Davis and hoping to to meet with him on his property, to be able to see the project from his from his side of the property line, see if there are additional kind of plantings or things like that 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 could work and help mitigate that view. We're going to continue to do that. I sincerely hope that we have the opportunity there. In terms of the the well, the well concern, it was something that was brought up at the last Planning Commission meeting, and it was something that I took extremely seriously. We left that Planning Commission meeting and the next day I called Terricon, who is our geotech consultant, who had done the geotech studies on the property, and I asked him to look into it. And then they looked into it and they came back and let us know that there is going to be, based on the records that they pulled of the existing well, and even in the worst-case scenario, if there was a well on the property line, that there will be no impact to those wells from the construction of Warm Run Solar. That was submitted to the county and it should be in the agenda packet that was here for this meeting, and it was it was also provided, provided with to Mr. Davis. I was hopeful that that would alleviate some of those concerns, but I'm committed to continue that conversation with Mr. Davis to make sure that that his concerns are alleviated on that. I'll get I'll get back to the to my remarks here. On the September, since the September eleventh Planning Commission meeting, there has been no significant change to this project. I know that I've spoken with most of y'all over the past week. The only change to this project is the addition of the forty-five thousand dollar development payment, which is per Virginia Code fifteen point two twenty-two eighty-eight point eight, as Chris mentioned, which is earmarking funds for substantial improvements within the county. Also, as Chris said, on the procedural side of things, the vote tonight, I believe, looks a little different than it did previously. It was my understanding that on the September eleventh meeting, there was one motion for the project that I thought to encapsulate both the comprehensive plan and the special exception permit. Tonight, the vote has been broken into two motions, one for the comprehensive plan compliance or twenty-two thirty-two, and the other for the special exception permit recommendation. So first, I'd like to speak to the project's comprehensive plan compliance. Last night, I sent county staff and the planning commissioners a letter outlining how Warm Run Solar is substantially in accord with the county's comprehensive plan. This letter is the same one that was provided prior to the September eleventh Planning Commission meeting. I handed copies out to planning commissioners, and you should have them in front of you, and I believe that there are also some additional copies on the table to my left. I'm going to walk through that letter and folks can follow along. I'm going to be touching on three specific goal categories outlined in the comprehensive plan. Those are natural environment goals, economy goals, and land use goals. In the interest of time, I'm not going to be able to touch on all of them, but there are five objectives and seven strategies that Warm Run directly promotes as outlined in the comprehensive plan. If you're interested in reading about them in more detail, they're outlined in the project's application narrative on pages fourteen through seventeen. So beginning with the natural environment goals. The goal on page seventy-eight says, "To protect and preserve the scenic beauty and environmental quality of the county." At Sun Tribe, we take great pride in where we cite our projects. Warm Run is well cited on a parcel that is in the Ag Transitional District, which the county defines as areas providing a buffer between more rural and more urban areas. It's also within a suburban service area, which is where the county is encouraging development. The county is protecting agricultural land by encouraging development in the AT zoning district, which is comprised of just under fifteen thousand acres, which is far less than the agriculturally valuable A-one or A-two zoning districts, which make up over a quarter of a million acres in the county. That's four hundred and ten square miles. The county earmarks land within the AT zoning district as being primed for growth and development. And that's why those districts are adjacent to cities, towns, and commercial corridors such as Route eleven. To maintain the personality of the county, the AT district is where development should happen. Warm Run was responsibly cited on this parcel in the AT district adjacent to a Ford dealership, which is zone B one, to protect and preserve the scenic beauty of Rockbridge County. Strategy two on page seventy-eight states that development should be controlled in areas where the natural landslopes are greater than fifteen percent. On slopes greater than twenty-five percent, residential development should be discouraged. Warm Run adheres to this strategy because the majority of the array footprint is on slopes less than ten percent. Additionally, on page seventy-eight is strategy five. This states that because of the common occurrence of stagnant air conditions in the county, land uses that generate high pollutant discharge should be discouraged. Unlike traditional carbon energy, carbon-based energy sources, a solar facility produces no emissions when generating electricity. So not only will Warm Run produce no emissions itself, but by producing energy in this way, it will avoid harmful pollutants that would otherwise occur from traditional generation sources. Moving on to the economic goals. The goal is to increase local job opportunities. And I'm going to group strategy five and strategy nine together, but those are talking about educational efforts directed towards future employment as well as supporting the development of green and energy-related jobs and their associated educational programs. As a Virginia company, Sun Tribe is a founding member of a solar workforce development organization called the Solar Hands-on Instructional Network of Excellence, nicknamed SHINE. This program helps drive solar job creation in the state. We're also active members in business alliance groups in the Commonwealth and work to promote local businesses and contractors. Warm Run specifically is going to result in job creation throughout the life of the project. This is including during the engineering, construction and construction phases, as well as maintenance jobs during the operational life of the project. Strategy one on page one fifty-three states, "Consider the cost-benefit impact analysis for proposed business, industries, and development." Warm Run provides an increase in direct, indirect, and induced revenue to Rockbridge County. That's more than five hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue and two million dollars in indirect economic benefit without the use of county services or infrastructure such as water, sewer, and schools. This is unlike any other future use for this property. And finally, land use goals. This is a long goal, so I'll try to paraphrase it a little bit, but it's to enhance and protect and preserve the ambience and environmental quality of Rockbridge while promoting a greater awareness of the scenic beauty and other positive attributes of the county. Maintain areas in their rural state and attempt to protect sensitive and unique land resources from degradation. Agricultural areas to be maintained and incompatible land uses such as commercial and industrial development, dense residential development, and the related public improvements will be discouraged in rural areas. I realize I didn't paraphrase that, and I just read the whole thing. But Warm Run promotes this goal because it is not development in a rural area. The project is development where the county encourages development within the Ag Transitional Zoning District and the Suburban Service Area. This is further illustrated by the neighboring commercial uses in the proximity to heavily trafficked roads. Strategy one says, "Recognizing that a certain amount of future growth and development is inevitable in Rockbridge County, the future land use plan should direct future development to occur on vacant or infill parcels located within or directly adjacent to developed areas." areas." Warm Run is well cited, again, on a parcel that is zoned AT within a suburban service area. It sits cradled within three major highways, I-81, I-64, and Route 11. It's proximate to larger commercial developments such as the Ford dealership, Walmart, Lowe's, Spencer's Home Center, and hotels. Warm Run Solar is a project that represents solar where it should be, in a place that preserves the county's highest priority, A1 and A2 agricultural lands. It prioritizes economic development in the Ag Transitional Zoning District and Suburban Service Area, adjacent to more commercial and more urban uses in the areas of Lexington. This is consistent with county's land development regulations and the county's comprehensive I'd like to pivot now to some highlights about the Warm Run project. I'm someone who remembers things when they're given to me in list form, so I'm going to give you guys four main points about what Warm Run Solar will do. The first one is that Warm Run Solar will be a good neighbor. The project is well-hidden and well-screened from nearby interstates and properties. Warm Run is a known and predictable quantity. This is a passive, quiet, and unlit use with no dust, odor, or noise during operation. The second point, Warm Run will steward the land respectfully. Unlike other permanent uses of the property, the project will be fully removed at the end of the project's life, and the land can, at the landowner's discretion, be returned to agricultural use. This project improves the site by moving from passive to active stormwater management through robust local and state regulations. The third point, Warm Run will fit into the landscape. Located between three major highways, adjacent to existing commercial uses, and on a small portion of the 166-acre family farm, Warm Run is located in an area where the county encourages development. The fourth and final point, Warm Run will benefit the community. The power produced by this facility will be consumed 100% locally, not sent to Northern Virginia to foot the bill for their cities or data centers. The project will provide over $500,000 in direct revenue to the county without drawing county services. Warm Run benefits the community, and it allows the Huffman family to keep the farm in the family. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
I'd also, I don't, Mr. Chair, if, I don't know when the correct time is to talk about the proposed Condition 8 NSF 457. Happy to do that whenever.
I think you ought to do it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Knock it out. Awesome. I'm going to call Trevor up. He's our engineer, so he knows this a little bit better than I do.
Good to see y'all again. Yeah, so yesterday, Suntribe sent a letter off to county staff and the planning commission detailing a request to amend Condition 8 to remove the text referencing NSF 457. If you recall, back in the meeting around September 11th, spoke to this a little bit. At the time, we were really just trying to get our understanding of the impact of the standard. Since then, we've grown a pretty strong understanding of it, had some conversations with staff, and that's what led us to submit the formal request for the change to the commission. You all should have, I think, a copy of it as well. So I wanted to just maybe highlight a few things from that. You know, this change would not impact the safety, the quality, the reliability, or the performance of the panels that would ultimately be delivered on-site to Warm Run Solar. So NSF 457, it doesn't dictate product design or testing standards. What it does is seek to quantify the supply chain and manufacturing process associated with the panels. This inclusion by staff is well-intentioned, based on our engagement with manufacturers and consultants. You know, it really became clear that it's very unlikely that we'll see adoption of this standard in a manner that allows inclusion into the Warm Run project. So kind of put another way, there's almost no equipment out there that meets NSF 457, and there's no indication that that's going to change on the timeframe associated with our construction for the project. So I think it was Melanie actually that made the question about, you know, what kind of panels are we going to use on this project? And so I do want to highlight that Warm Run Solar will use safe and high-efficiency Tier 1 modules, and that's really ensured through the IEEE, the IEC, and the UL standards that remain in Condition 8. So removal of NSF 457, it would ensure that the construction timelines aren't unnecessarily delayed, and that ultimately, the viability isn't needlessly threatened due to excessive restriction on equipment. And Chris, correct me if I'm speaking out there in here, but this proposed change is supported by staff as well, if I'm not incorrect.
Funny enough, we just had that conversation with an individual member, so I did not feel comfortable removing that because the planning commission had previously recommended that. So when we go through the draft conditions, you'll see that that has not been physically removed, but that would be a consideration of the planning commission.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so we respectfully request that the planning commission revise Condition 8 to the language proposed in the letter, as submitted yesterday, and happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Can you give, I mean, a layman's turn of the purpose of that standard? I mean, you've alluded to supply chain, things like that, but been familiar with a lot of standards, but there's got to be a baseline purpose. Is it environmental? Is it the things that some of the concerns that have been raised here? I mean, could it?
Yeah, yeah, happy, happy. It's a good question. So when you look at Condition number eight, you're going to see a handful of standards in there from IEEE, IEC, UL. All of those are focused on the actual modules themselves. They govern the safety, the reliability, the testing standard, to really ensure that what's delivered to site is safe, and it performs, and it meets industry standards. NSF 457 is the one outlier in that, in that it actually focuses on the supply chain. So that's another way to say it looks to quantify how green the manufacturing process is, the corporations that actually build some of the modules. It doesn't actually change the equipment that gets delivered to site. It is a standard that focuses on essentially how green the supply chain is. So an example would be if you wanted to quantify the carbon footprint of the manufacturing process for the modules, would be that. And a lot of it starts with measuring it. That's what a lot of the standard focuses on, is how do you start to measure and look at that? And the key with any standard really to become one is how widely is it adopted? And that's where, when this was originally put in, you know, on the surface seems like something we can all get behind, and it really triggered us to go out, talk to individual module manufacturers. We spoke to three Tier 1 module manufacturers, the largest provider in the world, second largest, and another top 10 one. And then we spoke to a few industry consultants, and those consultants work on diligence around these projects. So if you're a bank wanting to finance it, if you're a utility that's concerned around interconnection, if you're a buyer, an asset owner, that you want to buy it, you engage with these consultants to diligence the projects, and they were all familiar with it. They had not seen a project that had this either as a requirement or as an option, and none of them saw it as something that was viable to necessarily incorporate into a project scope because they just hadn't seen that anyone was, that the very few were actually engaging in, in the process of getting certified under NSF 457.
So if you put into a procurement action to buy panels using that standard, you'd get no takers?
You would get very few, is the concern, really. Is that it would be kind of a significant restriction on the availability of it. So I can give a couple examples right now of the three manufacturers we spoke to. You know, one, the largest in the world, they weren't familiar with it, and they had no intentions of certifying underneath it. The other, that was the second largest, they were familiar with it. They had some intentions on some of their plants that weren't actually built yet. Eventually, when they get online, they were considering certifying it, and then another manufacturer that was familiar with it but wasn't planning to certify underneath it. And so, you know, right now, the restriction is extremely tight on getting modules for it. We are aware of one manufacturer that supplies modules that are under that, that meet that standard.
This might be a question for Chris. I mean, where did that come from in the first place?
I believe it was a previously utilized condition in another locality.
We've not used it anywhere else.
We have not. No, sir. That was actually modified between the, I believe it was the August and September meeting.
Somebody must have suggested it, or you just saw it somewhere and figured, well, let's add that to it?
Well, we started seeing deficiencies with the original suggested condition as it pertained to panel specification, composition. So staff started exploring how other localities were dealing with that concern of the safety of the solar panels themselves.
I don't know anything about that locality and how, whether it validates what we just heard here?
If I recall correctly, it was Rockingham County that we utilized a partial part of the condition from.
Yeah, but we have no, no indication that they have had problems with that standard, no?
I do not have a, I do not have a knowledge of that.
I do not. David?
Yeah, and so maybe just one last highlight, that it doesn't affect the actual modules as they get delivered to site, the panels. It does not affect the design, reliability, the safety, or the performance of the modules. It's merely a measurement method based on the supply chain, based on the manufacturing process.
So it's a US agency that's created the standard, correct? So they certify overseas manufacturers or can and do versus domestic?
So it's NSF, yes, that created this. Our understanding, talking to some of those manufacturers, that it was a standard that, because it was focused on the US, would really only potentially bring value to modules, to panels delivered to the US, which I think was one of the reasons that they didn't necessarily see the value in it, and got continual feedback from them of this won't affect actually what you get. This is a certification standard. You know, the example actually we got from one of the manufacturers is to certify under this, you actually pay into a fee to NSF, and that fee is based on the revenue of your company. And so when you look at the revenue of a company overall, they saw that as a very significant expense that didn't actually apply to the vast majority of markets. And again, they assured us that it didn't actually drive any difference in the panels themselves as they manufactured. It's a process of understanding carbon impact and other sort of, essentially, for lack of a better term, green impacts of the supply chain itself, not the actual end product, i.e. the panels, as they get delivered to site. So really, I mean, it's something, when we see these come through, the first thing we go to is, let's understand, is this something that we can rise to meet? Is this something that maybe even standard that entities are doing? And that, you know, oh, this incorporation is already reflecting something that we're doing in its best practices? And that was my hope. That's where I approached this to begin with. Let's reach out and find out. And unfortunately, that wasn't the case in this particular instance. It's a standard that I think is well-intentioned, but we're just not seeing it be adopted for the reasons flagged, and ultimately, that creates a pretty large restriction on the equipment going to site. And so the way we kind of look at it is, if it's not changing ultimately what's going to site, it's not changing the safety, the reliability, the performance of these. You know, we really didn't see the value that it would bring to the project, to the county, to the citizens. But what it does do is it, it is, does create an undue hardship, essentially, of potentially slowing down the project construction timeline and ultimately threatening economic viability. And, you know, I think the way we approach it, the way we think about it is, ultimately, if this project is approved by the county, y'all want to see it be successful, and you want to see it move quickly, just like we do. And this is something that would negatively affect both of those aspects. And that's what really prompted us to say, okay, anywhere we can rise to the occasion when it comes to conditions, we want to do that. And I think, you know, speaking for myself, looking at this project, I think that we've done that on multiple occasions with these conditions, and I think they're great for the project and for the county. And this is just one that ultimately creates a lot more hardship, but doesn't actually bring value to ultimately the safety of what's going to be delivered to site.
Chris, are you going to, the 2020, the 2232 comp plan review, you want to discuss it first?
I think it's.
You're going to do a little presentation for us?
Well, I think what I have, bear with it here. I think it would be appropriate in the order, to have in the order that the board, excuse me, the planning commission, take action on the 2232 review first, and then transition to the special exception application itself. So with that, let me share my screen. These, this same draft is available on the table there. As previously stated, the Board of Supervisors' motion included, planning commission shall make a determination whether Warm Run Solar project is substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. For the planning commission's consideration, staff had drafted two resolutions. The first states that the planning commission finds that the application is substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan, and the reasonings have been developed in coordination with the majority of the planning commission. Those reasonings, as currently stated in the subsection 1, after therefore be it resolved, is the location character and the extent of the project is substantial compliance with the County of Rockbridge Comprehensive Plan for the following reasons. Number one, per land use map of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, the property is located in a suburban service area. The land use chapter states, depending on the level of road network, availability, public services, surrounding land uses, and zoning, residential, mixed residential, commercial, and industrial uses should be encouraged in the areas, and the areas is referencing the suburban service areas. Number B, per the Natural Environment Chapter of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, one objective is to ensure that mining, civic cultural, and development projects are designed as to minimize the impact on natural environment and view sheds due to the siting of the project and the proposed landscaping. The planning commission determines that the proposed project achieves this objectives. And number C, final reasoning, is per the Economic Economy Chapter of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, one strategy states, "Support the development of alternative energy projects for both commercial and residential uses such as biomass and wind as compatible with surrounding land use." The planning commission determines that the proposed project supports this strategy. So again, these were developed with, the reasonings have been developed with the coordination of the majority of the planning commission in the last week or so.
Thank you, Chris.
This is a resolution that we are adopting. This is not a recommending.
That is correct. With the 2232 review, as states in the Code of Virginia 2232, this is a little bit unusual, more unusual than a special exception application process. As you know, with a special application process, special exception application process, you are recommending approval or denial of the application. Approval, most times, it's specified conditions that are imposed. With that being said, per state law, this is solely your determination, and so this is not a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. It's a determination made by the planning commission and presented in writing to the Board of Supervisors, and I believe they have 10 days per state law to appeal that or overturn it. Is that correct, Chris?
It's 10 days for the applicant to appeal it, but it goes to the Board of Supervisors in their next meeting, and they have the right to either let it stand or they can overturn it by a majority vote. So the resolution will go, providing whether you agree that's in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan or disagree. One, either of those resolutions, one will go to the Board of Supervisors, and they will consider it in their next meeting, and they can take action on it, or they can just let it stand.
Good question. Yeah, I'm looking at two of the possible things, the approval or the denial, and both of them have substantial in it. I'm not a lawyer, but I would, as a citizen reading this, when it says, "I make a motion to adopt the resolution to determine that the project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan," that tells me there's something. that tells me there's something in the project that is not in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
I know what it means. That's actually where it comes straight from the statute. Substantial means that you believe that, uh, the siding, uh, the character and the extent, meaning the coverage of the, of the land would be used will be in substantial points. I mean, they will be.
In other words, it's not an absolute statement.
No, it's not. It's, it's the language using statues. Substantial compliance mean it doesn't have to be completely in compliance, uh, but it has to be in substantial compliance. In other words, you could point to things that you think this aspect doesn't imply, but I think most of it complies or substantially complies. It would be my interpretation. If you were going to make the decision.
We could get in a discussion of what percent is substantial. I mean, when you, you had denied, it's the same wording there.
But yeah.
Doesn't, I mean, most, uh, most of the questions are, is it in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah. And then this is, this is the language from the statute, which I think we should follow. And that, I, what I think it means is that each commissioner will make that determination whether they believe it's, and the, and the, and there's no definition in the statute what the word substantial means. So I think it has to be used, which you commonly understand what the word to me.
Okay, I'll buy that.
Yeah. I would, I think that's, I think that was the intent of the legislature in that.
We have comments?
Um, discussion? Yeah, um, I don't have anything more to add. The world of God, I just, I, I.
I have.
To hear others.
I have.
Yes.
Okay, this is the, first of all, I want to thank the, uh, warm run, uh, solar people. This is the fourth time I've been, uh, in one of these discussions because I was at the board of supervisors. It, this is the best solar presentation I've seen in the 20 years I've been going to meetings here and in Maryland. I want to thank you for that. Uh, having said that, what I've found is we've got people that stood up and said they're for this. We've had plenty of people say they're against it. Isn't it interesting, the people who we haven't heard from in those four gatherings, we haven't heard anybody from the farm bureau. We haven't heard anybody from the extension service, which is right up here. We haven't heard anybody from economic development of Rockbridge County. We haven't heard anybody from the Cyrus McCormick Farm. And last night at the board of supervisors, Dominion Energy was in talking about their long-term plan. Now solar was in the writing, it was in the PowerPoint, but they never mentioned it. And they haven't been in any one of our, uh, meetings otherwise. Um, that leads me to believe, and again, my interpretation of substantial is that it makes it not in compliance, uh, with the comprehensive plan. It doesn't support agriculture. It supports an individual and the way I understand it, they're non-residents of this property. Is that correct? Meaning, meaning the, the property, the.
The property owner?
Yeah.
That's correct. There's no dwellings on this, on the farm.
When you start thinking that, that, then it means what we're doing is we're supporting the individual. Now, it's in the agriculture transition and we'll buy that, you know? Why not have, uh, in the lower, the one, um, affordable apartments? You know, go back to commercial and everything. Also, you have all the contiguous neighbors aren't supporting it. So you start adding it up and we get back to property rights and I've talked about this before. What is property rights? Well, why do we have land use ordinances? You can't do anything you want to because we have land use ordinances. And the jurisdiction has picked what we're going to rule on, and this happens to be one of them. And also property taxes. Now you look at that. And you saw the letter from the gentleman from, I think it was, uh, Brownsburg that wrote in, right? Okay. And, you know, this is pretty, uh, not obvious to a lot of people, but what he said, is there more dollars for the beneficiary from the solar project than it is than they can produce from the agriculture? Product. Ergo, you know, we've got a lot, not that many A T zoning. Why isn't that an economic development goal? If you buy into it, why wouldn't, why would we ever turn any down? We recommend approval. Why wouldn't we approve all of them? I mean, I, I.
You suggesting we don't approve any of them?
Well, no, 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 no. I, what I'm suggesting is you look at what is not being spoken. Like, I have a disagreement on the meaning of substantial. It could be like debating on what the meaning is, is, was, you know, like that. And I don't have any hard feelings for somebody that votes, uh, yes for it or recommends yes. And I, I just think that we're at a pivotal point to see how we go. I don't know how, if I voted yes, how I, on this one, how I'd ever turn down another one, even though I think this is the best presentation there. I think about another thing. I'm probably the newest member of Rockbridge County. I moved here in 2020. But in my obituary and when, let's say 20 years from here, 19, uh, 20, uh, 44, I don't want the headline to say, and he voted for this solar. Now, also, uh, to continue my lecture, uh, no, I, I just kidding. You, you, you think about it and energy, uh, there are many, many ways to, uh, produce energy. Um, and we're doing it in an interesting way to get solar. I like, like solar. I, um, I looked at it at my house in, in Maryland, but guess what I found out? Put my, uh, insulation, blah, 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 blah. I saved 75% on my energy rather than paying for, for solar. So there are other ways. Also, are we, have had any discussion on batteries? That we had four people spoke in favor of, of this. Would they like a, a battery barn in their backyard? I mean, it, it, there are all these.
The battery is not part of the application. That, yeah, that would be a whole no ball game.
I think it's, it's one of these things where, you know, this is, we're talking big picture here. I think I am, and I think all of you are in, in your own way. I look at it like, you know, what happened in 1984 is like, what's going to happen in 2064? This technology is going to change. I, I mean, I don't have a good feeling of, of about this, but I think they're going to change the way the tax credits are. I think a trillion dollars in tax credits on something like this on, and we had, I mean, these are like CMOs. And, you know, how you look at what's going to happen in the economy. You know, if you have a 401K now, you should be pretty happy in the last week. Those are just some of the comments I've written down in the, uh, four, uh, sessions. And I think it, very good people have explained a lot of things. I think there are a few exaggerations on it. Uh, and I don't have anything against solar, uh, except for the right place, right time. And I'm done.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Oh, look, I guess I'll, I've said this to, to others before is that, you know, I've been looking at this and I'm the, I think I'm the newest one. Yeah, I'm the newest one on this. I'm looking at this, this project, this property with the current rules that, that, that we've got to guide, to guide us with. And that's the way I looked at it before. I took into account the, uh, comprehensive plan. Obviously did not think about putting a resolution together that, that explained that. Um, the land use reg, regulation starts out talking about the planning commission and the board of supervisors doing the delegate balance between property rights and, um, uh, and the general welfare. I guess is the, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm quoting that correctly. Um, so, that said, a lot of what I'm hearing you say and is what, um, it's really, I want to get working on is the solar ordinance so that we can make the rules better fit what all the, you know, the comments. We obviously not going to incorporate all the comments, but we can, we can take a good stab at, at, at addressing a lot of those things with, with, with setbacks, with locations, with, uh, maximum size, uh, aggregate for the whole county. Those are all things that could be considered as solutions to a lot of the things that we've heard. Um, I have taken, I said, listened to everything that's, that's been there before. And in terms of your, your concern about agriculture, this is, in the long run, 35 acres of this 166 acre farm has gone temporarily to use and might be have sheep in it or something like that, but obviously it's going to be a lot different, uh, than it is right now. Um, so I've been taking that into account that it's, uh, there's, there's things in here. It talks about minimizing. Doesn't say eliminate, or it doesn't say stop. It says minimize. And, um, that's one of the things I've, I've been putting my head on.
I'll delve a little further into that too. Um, our job as PC members is to follow the rules and regulations of the county comprehensive plan. Hopefully we'll get that solar ordinance done. Um, that word substantial comes back again. Is this substantial compliance and, uh, the area it's located? In my opinion, it does get to, get to that threshold. I have not voiced any of my personal opinion on these because we're not supposed to do that. But, um, from what I see, it does pass muster with the comprehensive plan.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I look at this and, you know, that, when you look at the dot.
Substantial, yeah, that word substantial.
And it, yeah, page 63, develop and implement solar ordinance for community and use utility scale solar projects that provide for the citing, development, operations and decommissioning in the county maintains the character of surrounding land uses. You've got 10 citizens in here saying that, hey, I don't think this is with the character. So you, you start going through that and you, you look at it. Now, you've got people that are saying for the, you've got solar, uh, it's great on houses. If you, uh, buy it, you know, all that is really good. I just finding it very difficult to tell the 10 people, hey, substantially, you're wrong. Man, I, that, that's just my opinion. Um, and, you know, we have a 40-year plan. Yeah. I mean, seriously, how does anybody seriously, uh, think that we're going to have any income from this in 40 years? Now, whether that means that we've got a, a used car lot, uh, down on the other part, I, I fully feel I, I won't be around when this is all developed. I agree, this is where the development should be. Substantially, you know? Uh, I, I hear what you say.
Well, I voted for it last time and, um, you know, I appreciate everyone's, um, to have the time to, to talk again about this. Um, you know, I, I think it is, you know, the substantial word, you know, it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan in my opinion. Um, Mr. Kramer mentioned, you know, how would you turn down another one? You know, if we keep butting these things in, I, I do think this one was cited well. Minimizes the impact to the neighbors as best as possible, um, minimizes. I didn't say there won't be any impacts. Um, it does allow the landowner to, to choose what to do with his land, and I don't think it's irreversible commitment of, of farmland. I think that, uh, once, once these panels are removed, um, you know, 25, 30, 35 years of organic matter, whether it's, whether it's sheet poop or, uh, grass clippings, decomposing on top of shallow soil, um, it could be put back into use. It's not, it's not going to have basement foundations, drain fields, electrical lines, roads, um, that other intensive uses would. So, um, for all those reasons, I'm still in favor of it essentially.
All right, uh, I guess at this point, uh, do we have a motion?
We read what you just did in the resolution?
Uh, no, you have, uh, prepared motions in front of you for both the approval, uh, and, and finding that's substantially in compliance. And you have one, uh, that you have two motions prepared in front of you that, that states it's not.
But.
Do I, uh?
I'm just wondering if anybody else has anything, because if, if not, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to determine that the project is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Close.
All right, uh, let's see. Uh, we have a motion in second and it's approved. So the comprehensive plan is, uh, approved here. Okay, at, at this time, the planning commission will consider the special exception application. Chris?
Yes. Um, yes. So the next part of this, uh, uh, process is that this time the planning commission will consider the special exception application. Uh, so with that being said, I'd like to share my screen. All right. Uh, so again, the next part of it is the, uh, we'll consider the special exception act application, further consideration, obviously. So in, in front of you, you have two motions, one to approve with, uh, conditions. And what we've done is verbatim, number one through 14, these also available, uh, on, on the table to my left. Uh, verbatim, number one through 14 are the same conditions that were recommended, uh, on, at the September 11th, uh, 2024 meeting. And then in red, I have, uh, some, uh, uh, other conditions that could be utilized uh, with the special exception. And obviously number 15, 16, 17, and 18, uh, pertaining to Mr. Ramsey's, uh, Chief Ramsey's, I should say, uh, memo, uh, from late October, uh, pertaining to some fire and rescue, uh, suggested conditions, if you will. And then number 19, as, as discussed in the, in my presentation at the very beginning, uh, it states that no blasting and or use of explosives shall be utilized for the excavation, construction of the project. Then, um, and it's sort of, it is, it is somewhat unusual, state law pertaining to 15.2 dash 2288.8. Uh, and, and all other special exception permits and as, 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 at all other special exception conditions, excuse me, uh, the word imposed is used throughout state law. You may impose those. So how this has been drafted, uh, with, with communication from the planning commission itself is that, that, um, the, the motion to approve would include the, the imposition of the following conditions. So those would be one through, uh, one through, uh, excuse me, 19. And then, uh, then number, and then it stops there. Those would be the imposed conditions. And then it says furthermore, the planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors considers, considers granting the following condition as suggested by the applicant. Uh, so if, if needed, um, we could go through these and I will, excuse me, I almost missed it. Uh, the one change that is from the, uh, from the planning commission agendas and agenda item and agenda item for this discussion is prior to the activation of the solar, uh, facility as it was written in the, uh, agenda item for tonight's meeting, uh, through conversations, uh, with, with individuals of planning commission. It was determined that prior to the construction of the solar facility, not the activation of the solar facility. Uh, so I did want to point that strike out. If needed, I'd certainly happy to review each one of these, uh, that, that are in front of y'all and again, on the table to my left.
Just, yes. One quick question. Forty-five thousand dollars, that was a proffer?
It's not a proffer, it's, proffers are associated with a rezoning. This is considered a condition. But again, state law is unusual in the fact that the twenty-two eighty-eight point eight says that, that the, the governing body, which is of course the board of supervisors, may grant a special, may, may grant a condition associated with verbatim, the language that's utilized in this, in this condition, part of this condition. With that being said, again, all other state law pertaining to special exceptions use the word imposed. And so unlike conditions, excuse me, unlike proffers that are associated with the rezoning, proffer, proffers have to be volunteered. And so that is one similarity between this unique section of state code that pertains to solar developments and proffers. But, but technically speaking, it is not a proffer, it is a condition that may be granted.
So from a standpoint of us five, is this the formula that we would use in the future?
Meaning, meaning the forty-five thousand dollars? No, sir, no, sir, this is, again, this is suggested by the applicant. So that, that, that is, it would not, it would, it would set the precedent, if you will, of let's say the board accepts this, let's say the board approver approves this and accepts this condition. We obviously would share that with other, same, same way we do other approval ordinances with, with future solar developers. But it would, you know, a future solar developer may not be interested. We have talked about this state law with other solar developers, the Fairfield Lee one comes to mind, if I recall correctly. One that was approved, we discussed this with the applicant and they were not interested in, in suggesting a condition. And that, that could also hold true in the future, absolutely.
Chris, do we, you feel like we need to read these? Or should we just proceed with the?
Well, I think we need to discuss the
Yes.
Standard Institute.
Number eight.
As I say, the applicant's application, I was not comfortable removing, with removing that. I think that's a, that's a, would be a recommendation from the planning commission. And so that number eight, as it stands in the agenda item, and number eight, as it stands before us on the screen and, and on the information to the left of me, that, that condition still is verbatim the same as what the planning commission recommended.
It's not a
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I'll move to strike that, that sentence as they requested, it shouldn't affect the quality of the panels, so I'm okay with. If it helps the supply chain, getting the project done will be a positive thing, done quicker.
We have, is that a motion on that that needs me seconded or is it just something?
Oh, no, that, it's, it's for discussion, absolutely, yes.
Does anybody not like that idea?
Okay.
And so to be clear, if it's intent of the planning commission, we would, we would strike the two. I'll, I'll read that one in the, in its entirety. At the time of site plan review, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with a written panel specification and compensation disclosure document. Projects shall comply with the accepted national environmental protection and project safety standards for the use of solar, solar panels, photovoltaic energy, electric energy projects, excuse me. Such existing product certification and standards include, this language is being struck, International Electra, Electro Technical Commission number six, one, two, fifteen point two, Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineer Standards, fifteen forty-seven, and the Underwriters Laboratory number one, excuse me, six, one, seven, three, zero, dash, two. The site plan shall reference the, the specific safety standards and how the project safety standards will be met. But I did feel it was necessary to write that, so we're all on the same page of what is being struck. And of course, I've done that on, on the, on the screen as well.
What struck is the National Sanitation Foundation slash American National Standard Institute number four, seven, four fifty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. About fifteen through nineteen.
Guess it's time for discussion. Any discussion?
I'd make a comment, is this something we should do regularly is contact the fire chief on non-solar stuff even that we could be doing?
Yes, sir, and we have done that in the past, certainly on, on campgrounds, special event venues, those type of things.
With the school that we did the other last time.
I believe so, yes.
Did?
I believe so, yes. So that, that, that approval was contingent upon, that particular approval was contingent on fire and rescue, if applicable, I should say.
Well, we didn't go to them ahead of time and say, what do you think about this?
Oh, usually that would, in that format, obviously that building is existing building, they're utilizing the existing building in that particular project Jubilee Hill LLC, the, the only addition is a parking lot area in the, in the, in the front. So that's a little bit different because if it was
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know, there are now going to be students in there, not patio furniture.
Well, there were, there are, there were RA students in there.
In part of the building.
Yes.
There might be numbers associated with, you know, how many sprinklers you have to have. I don't, I mean, I don't know the rules, so that's what I'm just saying is that consulting with them ahead of time would might be a smart idea.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
In most cases.
Yes, some of those would be administered through the building department, obviously, such as the requirement for sprinklers.
But these weren't, as, my, my concern is that these weren't in there before, now they are.
Yes.
But if we didn't have this extra time, we wouldn't have.
That, that is correct, yes, sir, that's an excellent point, I agree.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to just say something here, this is a divisive issue for the county. And it's not a fun process. Hopefully, as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, we can tighten this up, we're trying to strike a balance for everybody in the community, everybody's needs. I, I don't take the homeowners, the neighbors' situations lightly, it's, it's difficult, you know. And I don't know if this is possible, but I'm worried about Mr. Davis as well on paper as opposed to just goodwill. So before the supervisors meeting, I would love to see, have a discussion with all the parties concerned and see if we can, putting on, something on paper. I know it's difficult because we touched on it one time, but I would love to see that addressed.
Thank you for that comment.
Yeah, yeah. And again, it's difficult, hopefully can pull together as a community and figure out how to do this the best way possible.
I'd like to make, I think it kind of dovetails to some of it, the, the, the solar ordinance that we, you know, and I keep harping on it because I think this is the best possible solution for the future. And we need, I need to translate a lot of what people have said into words that could be considered for that ordinance. You know, legal language and things like that that could be put in there. Knowing more about the company and their background could be something that we can incorporate into applications in the future. But I, I think we, we need some of that, that information, we need to translate what you all have been saying into words that can be then applied by the companies considering, and also when, when, when a company does come to us. I think that's something that we
Chris, I'd still want to see that document if you get a chance, about the different tax implications.
I'd like to see that, some of that stuff, is, is there a way we can, we can head that kind of stuff off? Because, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's a concern that, that somebody could be taking that advantage of that, those things to the point where it's detrimental to the, to the county. I don't see that in this case, I can't, I can't apply that here.
I'm like you, I mean, I'm most concerned with the Davis as well, too, considering how close it is and the bedrock and, and the drilling that will take effect. And I don't know if you're alluding to possibly in between this meeting and the board supervisors taking action, put another in there for a bond, I don't know how that would work with the company in terms of, you know, it's, it's going to be sold, you've been clear about that. And I don't even know an amount, but it's just, just something that, like you're saying, something on paper, whether it be a financial assurance or something that's binding, I'm probably overstepping my
You're, you're not overstepping your bounds, but the only way for, to make an official recommendation to the board would be do something in the, in the conditions or other things now. If any comments you make to the board after this means over, you'd be doing in your capacity as a citizen. Not as, not as a planning commission member.
It's, it's doable, it would just be as a citizen.
As a citizen, you can, just like Andy says, you can make any recommendations to them and suggestions is what might want to be.
And just saying that we'd like to address that issue is probably not detailed enough to, maybe we do it as a citizen, I'm
You, you can, you can send a, a detailed letter of what you'd like, but it's, it wouldn't be a planning commission document, nor would it bear the weight of the planning commission.
And he threw out a bond similar to the landscape bond or the, a bond for the decommissioning agreement. Maybe
There is a bond by statute for decommissioning agreement, we do have, that's, that is a requirement, so that's there. But they, if you want bonds for other things, that might be things to discuss with the board supervisors because they could implement ordinances or other things.
We could put something right now, you're saying as well.
You, you can put any condition you want on this, that's, that's your
But I'm sure I know enough about it.
You can recommend any condition.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, it'd be great to have a thirty thousand dollar bond to but, but again, I don't know what the proper procedure is for that, Chris or John. That, and I feel like that's a little uneducated recommendation, but something to that effect.
And, and I can't speak now as to the legality of that right now because I didn't research that issue.
Okay.
So I'd have, I'd have to look into that.
So I'm comfortable making that as a citizen.
I mean, I'll, I'll talk to my supervisor as well as a citizen, but that's, I understand that.
Chairperson, maybe, the applicant is requesting to address the
Please, yep.
Appreciate it, thank you guys. I, I also, you know, I was concerned about the well when, when Mr. Davis brought that up, that's why we went to our, our consultant. And, you know, we're willing to work to, you know, continue to, to provide the necessary assurances. And it's my understanding that at least one of the supervisors has similar concerns, we've talked about that. So, yeah, more than happy to, in addition to your guys' comments to the, the board as, you know, and I guess in your capacity as citizens, you know, we're going to be actively working with the board of supervisors as well, come up with something that can hopefully alleviate the concerns about Mr. Davis as well. It's, it's something that we really want to do.
Thank you. All right. I guess we have a motion.
I'm going to have to go through, or can I skip the ones that just make the, just the changes?
Um, I think it would be appropriate to, to have the motion, if it's the will of planning commission, have the motion to recommend approval as, as shown, as, as presented at the meeting, one through fourteen, no, it's more than that. Uh, one denial, one through nineteen with any modifications, such as that one. And then I, I would state that the, the, I would furthermore, I would read the furthermore on the suggested. Yes, yes, sir.
I make a motion to recommend the board, to the board of supervisors that a special exception permit to develop a three-megawatt AC solar project in the agricultural transitional zoning districts per Land Development Regulation Section six oh three point oh three dash nine and six oh three B point oh three dash fourteen public utilities be approved with the imposition of the following conditions that we we discussed with the exception. In item eight, we will strike the, the National Sanitation Foundation slash American National Standards Institute number four fifty-seven is one of the standards that, that will be scratched. And then it would be the ones, one through, through nineteen. Furthermore, the planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors consider granting the following condition as suggested by the applicant. In accordance with Virginia Code fifteen point two dash two-two-eight-eight point eight, payment equal to forty-five thousand dollars shall be made to the county within three months following the trade permit approval. Such sum to be earmarked and expended by the county for construction of substantial public improvements, the need for which is not generated solely by the granting of a special exception permit.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Motion carries. Move on to the next zoning text amendment discussion.
Yes, prior, prior to moving on, I would like to make the comment that the pub, the public hearing for the board of supervisors has been scheduled for Monday, November the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four in this room at, at six PM. That meeting starts at five thirty PM, but the pu, public hearings are at or after six here. And I apologize doing this last minute, but one correction to Mr. Kramer on the, on the list of people who we've heard from and haven't heard from. Tom Stanley did incorporate a letter that was included in, in your package, extension age, excuse me. With that being said, all other, all the other ones were, were correct as far as not getting comments from. So I did, I apologize for doing that last minute, but I did want to make that point, yes, sir, thank you. And, and so the notice of public hearing has been advertised in the newspaper already, and we sent out the individual adjoining landowners notice of public hearing this afternoon, correct? Yes, we sent that out this afternoon. So again, I did want, while, while we had the public attendance, notify everyone when this tentative date for the public hearing with the board supervisors is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're going to have a discussion about the zoning text amendment, Chris. Writing for a private school use in the general business B-one zoning district?
Sure, would it be beneficial to take a three-minute recess?
Take a little break here.
All right, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, so I assume there is a
I encourage you to come on the twenty-fifth. Yeah. Hopefully this will turn out better. Yeah. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
I think one, one thing is that they're lighter or nimble. They can get in and establish, uh, locations where some of the power companies. Maybe there should only be the power companies getting such a reason, but.
So it's a lot of time.
But hey.
Yes, absolutely. I think we'll make that.
What time is a good time?
Maybe if you want to just call, is that possible?
Sure. Do you have a card or can you?
Who writes the spousal excuses or that why I'm so late?
Good comments.
Interesting. Anytime. Other place and you sit here and you think. But you made some good comments about the act transition that really changed my mind on. Well, I think that that's a great distinction and, you know, I didn't.
But you know. I think, I think we're going to see it. So it's never going to be that answer to, to getting rid of oil. Well, exactly the next four years and, and, uh, and then, and then incentives that they come along with.
It's, um, it's.
Chris?
Yes.
You think it's time to.
Yes, sir.
All right. Where we lost David Whitmore? No, he's right here.
Yep.
Lost the entire audience.
Jeez, we're not popular.
David, thank you for those comments.
Well said.
I'm listening to a lot of.
We're getting there.
That would get too well for that. So, you know, they have an opinion, but an opinion is.
Okay, let, let's reconvene. I guess, uh, John is, uh, gonna participate. It's okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, zoning text amendment discussion. Private school use in a business B one zoning district.
Uh, yes. At its October ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the planning commission instructed staff to include agenda item for the discussion for potential zoning text amendment. To provide for a private school use in a general business zoning district, uh, as a use by special exception was the, was the context of the conversation. Under current ordinance or current, uh, current regulations slash ordinance, section six oh five point oh two dash thirty-three of the land development regulations. Business and vocational schools are permitted uses in the B one zoning district. However, there are no, uh, current provisions for a private school in the B one zoning district. Based on the discussion on the October ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting, there was desire to explore zoning text amendment to provide for private schools as a use by special exception in the B one zoning district. And so, um, appropriately, so we, we would just put this on the agenda, uh, and then discuss it. And then i- if the desire of the planning commission, the outcome could be a motion to instruct staff to place it on the advertisement. Uh, I'm sorry, to place it on the upcoming agenda for, for a public hearing.
I would be in favor of that. Any other comments?
Just, you, you had mentioned once that you had a list of things that you want to change. Can you, can we incorporate more into it?
It's as far as t- timing goes. I mean, we, we, in fact, on Friday of this week, we're going to work with a, a, uh, intern from Mr. Dryden's office to go over some of those lists and, and get some of the, the heavier. Uh, the, the, uh, more prevalent one out of the, on the agendas. Yes. But it's really staff time. I'd sound like a broken record up here.
No, I know. And I'm, I'm sympathetic to, to that. Like you and I spend time with them today. We feel like we're taking away from, uh.
Not at all. Not at all. It's all preparation.
Yes, we are. Okay.
Well, it's, it's all preparation. So, um, we could certainly provide a list, uh, to y'all at the next meeting or via email of things that I think are, are more imperative than, than others.
Prioritizing the list.
Sure.
I'm saying if you have a list of those things, I mean, this is, this is a simple thing and we're going to have a hearing for changing a few words, right?
We did to adding two words to the ordinance. It's a, it's a zoning text amendment. Yes, sir. And that would be done for each individual one we're talking about.
We'd have to have a, a hearing for each change.
That's correct. Yes.
Well, we could have a hearing for, to hear if we had multiple changes would be discussed in one hearing. You could do that, I believe.
All advertised individually. Yes.
Well, yeah. Well, you do have to.
Same night, different ads. Same night, different advertisements.
I believe, well, it could be incorporated into.
I think it could be incorporated. It would be pretty long depending on how much, how many changes we have.
Yes.
But it, but it's, uh, as we said, we, we've discussed that we're, we're looking into what, uh, changes need, should be made to make it the ideal situation.
If you have a list of twenty things that we can knock out five at a time.
Sure. Um, I agree.
As long as there's no solar, uh, stuff next time.
And there, there, obviously the solar ordinance will be coming, uh, very shortly. Obviously the discussion of the solar ordinance will be coming very shortly. So, so I will, I will, uh. Pull that list back up and, and send, send to y'all the suggested, uh, the, the suggested ones that I, that I think of are, are more imperative than others.
I mean, I'd rather, I think, like I said, with that particular thing we had to do last week, I, I mean, I think. Like I said, the, the AT is more likely to become B one than B one become AT. And we did it for, and I, you know, I, I supported that.
It's actually the second time we've done that same exercise for a private school.
Yeah. This fixes it for that. But like you said, it, it's a possibility of it happening again, maybe minimal. You know, where this, the, for the private school.
Well, I mean.
Fixing it is, is okay.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
And I don't know where that, you know, it's not like we're going to have a whole room of, of, of people.
Some of the zoning text amendments will, will have more attendance than others. And I agree with you on this particular one. I don't think it's going to, uh, generate a lot of public discussion.
Go add a few more like that one. That's not going to generate, you know, a whole lot and see what's Frank Sumo mouth.
We could certainly provide a list to the planning commission on, at the, at the, via email or at the next, uh, next agenda item.
So, uh, private school and what was, you read the, uh, the, one of the schools.
The, the other schools are business and vocational schools.
Business and vocational schools. So, uh, private school, um, doesn't necessarily have to be a nonprofit.
That is correct. No, sir.
Okay. But a lot of them operating in the county currently are.
That's correct. Yeah, that's mine. I, I, I think, I don't know which one it is. It's a lot or a most, but.
What I'm getting at is, is, um, is, you know, we have such limited B one areas and loss of, loss of revenue essentially. By, by it being a by right use, uh, you know, I don't, I don't foresee it being a big problem, but, but it could, could, uh, have an impact on.
I think, I think it will. As far as you know, we, we, um, other localities, nearby localities recently had the discussion of limited office space and stuff like that. So I think it will get to a point. Uh, i- if, if staff may, I would suggest doing it by a special exception because there may be some appropriate, uh, business zones that, I'm sorry. There may be more appropriate sites in a business zone than others for this particular use. And I do not have a pre-prepared. We do not have a pre-prepared motion for this one, but the, 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 the motion would be, uh, to instruct staff to take it, uh, to take it to public hearing. To advertise for a, uh, private school as a use by special exception in the B one zoning district.
I make a motion to do that. One second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. We will, we will follow up accordingly.
Should ask for opposed each time. This is good practice. When you make motions, you should always ask for opposed afterwards.
I still didn't hear you, John. I'm sorry.
When you make a motion, just the proper, uh, protocol would be to ask for all in favor, then all, uh, opposed.
Oh.
Especially when, when they have the I votes.
Stay with me, John. I'll get it eventually.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. That's fine. If we do a roll call vote, that's individual. But if you don't do a roll call vote, even if you assume everybody said aye, it's always best to ask.
That's correct.
And oddly enough, uh, Mr. BB and I talked about it maybe at five o'clock today. Are we going to start doing a roll call vote? And I said, let's not do it today. But in the very near future, I think we're going to transition to a roll call vote.
Anyway, just, I'm sorry to bring that up, but.
No, 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 please, please. I'd, I'd like to get better at my procedural.
Yep.
Procedures.
Is that adjournment?
I'm not going to call for a vote on that one.
Do we have the motion to adjourn? He made a different motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. We're joined. Thank you all for your hard work. John, Neil, Viveka, Chris. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
I really do hope he's, everything's going smooth out here. Bob, thank you for your.